Welcome back to the Select Committee on Victoria Planning Provisions Amendments, VC 257, VC 267 and VC 274. We're now going to move into another panel discussion with a group of councils that we'll[17.61][17.61]introduce momentarily. Before I do that, just for the purposes of the witnesses, some information. So, all evidence taken today is protected by parliamentary privilege as provided by the Constitution Act of 1975 and the provisions of the Legislative Council Standing Orders. Therefore, the information you provide during the hearing is protected by law. You are protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but if you go elsewhere and repeat the same thing, surprisingly, these comments may not be protected by this privilege. Any deliberately false evidence or misleading of the committee may be considered a contempt of Parliament. All evidence is being recorded, and you will be provided with a proof version of the transcript following the hearing, and those transcripts will ultimately be made public and posted to the committee's website. Could I firstly thank you all very much for attending? I know that this was on very short notice, so I'm sure we've bent your calendars and your lifestyles a little bit, but thank you, and we look forward to hearing your evidence today. For the hands-eye record, could I ask you please to state your name and the organisations you are appearing on behalf of, and we might start with Ms Murphy, if you would please?
Hi, my name's Kate Murphy, and I'm from Moonee Valley City Council.
Brett Walters also from Moonee Valley City Council.
Jonathan Gutman from Kingston City Council.
Jaclyn Murdoch from Kingston City Council.
Stephen Cooman, Mayor of the City of Casey.
Catherine Surles, City of Casey.
Thank you very much, and welcome. So, we're going to start with contributions from each of the councils, a submission you can just speak to, five to 10 minutes. I'm going to give you that little sign when you're about to run out of your 10 minutes. So, we invite that, and let's start with Moonee Valley.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Moonee Valley Council appreciates the opportunity to contribute to your deliberations. Two of the planning provisions, particularly VC 257 and 267, have direct implications for our municipality. Given the short time, as you mentioned, and the need for any formal submission to be endorsed through council, we've relied on our earlier submissions that remain relevant in content, namely the Plan for Victoria submission and our Activity Centre submission, both endorsed last year. Overall, we support the objective of delivering essential housing in appropriate location, and we understand that reducing urban sprawl and increasing density around public transport nodes is indeed logical. However, we do advocate that future reforms should be based on genuine consultation with our community, clear communication and adequate resourcing for infrastructure for its effective implementation. With respect to VC 257, the Activity Centre Amendment, we have two of the 10 pilot activity centres in Nidri and Essendon North, and our submission to that emphasised that the Victorian Government should engage in a genuine partnership with council in planning its activity centres and residential catchment centres, areas. Ensure that transparency, good governance and policy rigour are the core principles guiding this project. While some of the concerns outlined in our submission have definitely been addressed in the updated plans, certain items remain unresolved in our view. The technical background information that presumably justify the plan, such as community infrastructure, traffic and transport impact, open space, drainage, contamination and buffer assessments, they haven't been publicly released yet. This creates uncertainty, confusion and indeed suspicion in our community, particularly regarding the capacity of our existing infrastructure and services to cope with the anticipated population growth and how this will be addressed moving forwards. We do agree that affordable housing is a critical issue for society, and we support it through mandatory planning provisions, which are, such as inclusionary zoning, which are absent currently from the provisions, and we'd look forward to further iteration of the reforms to include such mechanisms. Additionally, we anticipate that infrastructure planning, funding and provision are needed to maintain levels of amenity and service as the infill development proceeds. Council has a part to play, but it does not have the financial capacity to meet the demands of the expected growth alone. There's particular concerns around, our activity centres are centred around a particular tram corridor, which we know currently is capacity constrained, interrupted by traffic, it's cars fighting with the tram, they're not accessible stops, those sort of things, which make it hard to imagine increasing its use. Council, as I said, we don't, we have a part to play in the infrastructure provision, but we don't have the financial capacity to meet the demands of the expected growth alone. And we also think that there's an opportunity for the Victorian government to form a narrative about the local benefits of the activity centres to the community and improve the acceptance of change. We've seen it firsthand in Moonee Ponds, where residential intensification has led to quite a vibrant local strip shopping, and those sort of things haven't really been talked about. With respect to VC 267, I think the introduction of the Townhouse and Low Rise Code was introduced very rapidly in our view, released on the 4th of March and enacted on the 6th of March. The code left limited opportunity for stakeholder engagement and insufficient time for us as councils and the community to meaningfully engage with the changes, we feel. Acknowledging though that this reform is in effect, several aspects of the code are concerning to our council. Firstly, the removal, effective removal or turning off of the planning policy framework around locally environmentally sustainable development policy. The inability to rely on Clause 6501, the decision guidelines, which provide a mechanism for assessing matters not addressed by the code or overlays in the planning scheme. For example, where we have updated flood information that may inform finished floor heights or things of that nature, won't necessarily be picked up as a result, as the new information comes to hand in the DED complies stuff. And we're also unable to assess good design and development applications, and objections to poorly designed compliant developments can't be considered, as you know. Additionally, there are some lingering concerns with the implementation, namely that the community's got limited knowledge regarding the code and the potential impacts on the neighbourhoods. When are managing significant concerns and industry inquiries with limited information, which is a challenge for us. We also don't support changes to appeal rights. Council officers must still give public notice of applications, even though community members can no longer object and have their concerns formally considered under this provision. So, we feel that undermines trust in government really at all levels, as residents invest significant time and effort into preparing those objections and expect meaningful consideration by us. So, overall, we acknowledge the urgent need to deliver more housing across Victoria, and we support reform aimed at achieving this outcome. However, the approach to implementing those amendments have raised significant concerns around transparency, consultation and the loss of what we think of as essential planning tools that support good development outcomes. So, we advocate four reforms that prioritise not only housing supply but sustainable design, climate resilience, infrastructure delivery and the protection of community trust in the planning system. So, we urge the Victorian Government to ensure that future planning reforms are informed by genuine stakeholder engagement, supported by robust evidence and implemented with clear communication and adequate resourcing.
Thank you very much. Stuart?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Perhaps just to provide some context for the City of Kingston, geographically, we kind of form around the suburbs of Moravon down to Patterson Lake, Stingley Village, Clayton South and the coastal areas of Mentone, Chelsea, Cheltenham. We're here today, and we do apologise in advance to the committee for our late submission. We had limited time to prepare it, so we apologise that that's occurred, but I do hope to take you through it today and just perhaps prompt you to some of the key aspects. The intent of our submission is really to provide a bit of a point of difference around the practical application of our housing strategy. We won't talk too much about process, but we do want to talk a bit about our housing strategy, and I think through the submission you'll appreciate why that's potentially beneficial for the committee's inquiries. We do support the efficiency of housing and the need to provide it effectively. We do note in our submission at paragraph two that we partner the development industry in doing that work together. The point of difference that I was referring to is drawn out in paragraph three around our amendment C 203, which is, was our housing strategy, which I will come to. It took six years to prepare paragraph five. It talks to the relationship that the council had with the Department of Transport and Planning in doing that work, and it was quite an effective engagement that we had with the department around preparing the statutory amendment. It was approved by the Planning Minister almost a year to this day, on the 2nd of May 2004, drawn out at paragraph six. What it really has intended to do is provide nuanced local policy and changes to our housing zone schedules. Quite critically, it embedded a preferred neighbourhood character into our city. It also importantly implemented the work of our urban cooling strategy, which is obviously quite critical to our city. Mindful of the absolute imperative to provide more housing, it expanded substantially the residential growth zone within our municipality. Our housing capacity work was subject to an independent planning panel at the time in delivering the strategy and was accepted by the panel. To provide the committee some context, our target was originally 59,000 when set by the government, was then amended to 51,500 new dwellings, which we believe we can comply with. I think an important paragraph for the committee is paragraph 11, which talks to the extent of community engagement that we undertook to prepare that housing work. It involved direct mail out to 78,000 residents within the City of Kingston, explaining that the nuanced nature of our local amendment. We actively promoted it through a range of media, we advised community of it through our rates notice as well as we were developing the amendment. I think it's important at 12 that the committee, if it's interested and wants to know more about the extent of that engagement over a six-year period, we are happy to share further information with the committee, should it be of interest. I wanted to move briefly to activity centres and perhaps share some lived experience within the City of Kingston, first turning to Cheltenham, where the Activity Centre Zone has been applied. We did structure planning in 2010 for Cheltenham. The structure planning delivered very significant development in the core of the Activity Centre. Apartment buildings were being built in Cheltenham ahead of more inner-city areas as a consequence of that structure planning. I then wanted to draw to your attention a really good practical example, I think a paragraph 16, which is a precinct that would be defined as edge of Activity Centre, a non-core area in Cheltenham, in the Morden Barker Precinct. In that location, and we can provide very detailed aerial photography if it's useful for the committee, but in that location, standard kind of detached 50 by 150 allotments, within a 10-year period, every block in that area was developed for four-storey accommodation. Council, in its wisdom, chose to purchase two of the house blocks to be able to provide a pocket park for that precinct. But it is a very good case study into providing what is now a very small precinct of 360 dwellings at four-storey scale on the edge of an Activity Centre, and a model that has worked very well, we say, in Cheltenham. I move quickly to Moravon, which is one of the centres that was in the government's pilot programme. I heard you hear from Mr Cripps before, from the City of Bayside, we obviously share that and Glenara, Mr Davis is correct, we share it with Glenara as well. I think from Kingston's perspective, the taller buildings are clearly on our side of that Activity Centre at the moment, probably aligns well with where the public transport is and the major facilities. They are in the core of the Activity Centre, and I wish to stress the importance of that. At paragraph 18, we draw out the fact that a number of the buildings that we have approved through our own local planning work are taller than the now introduced controls after the pilot programme. We also draw out in paragraph 18 that that was another Activity Centre that we planned. I'll move quickly now to VC 267, which is really the focus of our submission today and our housing strategy that's been approved, and areas of concern for Kingston. We do suggest that paragraph 21, that there are some opportunities to further enhance and strengthen some things that we got out of our amendment. Some of the things that we did, were able to deliver, were around built form outcomes, just the opportunity to create passive surveillance in new housing. Materials and architecture is particularly important in a place like Kingston. I think we were the first council to introduce into policy the principle of having light-coloured roofs, and that's quite important from a sustainability perspective. And then we really delve quite deeply into the implications of tree canopy and shading on homes and their sustainability credentials. As I mentioned, and it's commented at paragraph 22, it was gazetted almost a year ago. At 24, we've made some suggestions, and I won't dwell on them, just to the provisions of Clause 55, that could be further enhanced. But I did want to take you to the other kind of primary part of our submission, which is around ESD, so environmental sustainable design, and really the role that our amendment played and local policy plays and has played in recognising best environmental practice. The Build Environment Sustainability Score Code may or may not have been something that the committee's yet heard about, but it's something that a number of local governments are using or have used. What it allows us to do, and it's explained at paragraph 29, is have an active dialogue with developers, designers, architects around a range of different things, from rainwater tanks being replumbed into toilets and laundries, water efficiency generally, installation of solar PVs, appliances in homes, which often would think that may not be a role for the planning system, but it's certainly something that we're trying to do at Kingston. Daylighting buildings, natural ventilation. You'll hear me talk shortly about green infrastructure landscaping, which we think is particularly important, I'm mindful you've heard a bit about that already. Some of that could be lost through this, these amendments, and we do have some concern about that. We would stress, and we do at 31, that the role of planning is not just about establishing the framework, it's about the longevity of the homes that people are going to live in for several decades. And these ESD components in our planning scheme are really quite critical to thinking about that. We draw parallels in that paragraph to the deficiencies in the building system following building regulation in the mid 90s that are now kind of corrective work that we have to do. ESD is so critical to making sure that we're not doing corrective work around sustainability in the built environment in the future. We make the point at 34 about how pleased we were to see in Plan for Victoria the 30% tree canopy target. We then make the point at 35 and 36 that Kingston is not Bayside, it doesn't, it has 12.3% of tree canopy at the moment. It's struggled to kind of increase its canopy, we have a target to get to 15.3% by 2030. So, in our housing strategy that has been approved, the way we do that is explained at 36 with our landscape guidelines, which are embedded in the scheme. Our case studies that are in our submission reinforce that we actually have a higher tree canopy outcome that is now eroded as a consequence of the amendments in terms of some of the prescribed tree requirements that we want to achieve. Just in concluding, I'll make a couple of observations. Our work took six years and deep engagement with our community to have our amendment approved, and it did get approved by the minister.
Excuse me?
I would like to now make the point that there are some potential unintended consequences through the work that's envisaged, particularly through amendment C 267, and we would encourage the committee to have a look at what comes out of our planning scheme that's just gone in as a consequence of amendment 267, and just potentially pause and reflect on the merits of a council doing something at a local level and really creating some quite dynamic and important changes, we say, to our scheme versus the challenge, which is inevitably before policymakers about a more generic approach across all local government areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so thanks for the opportunity to be here and present. So, we're from the City of Casey, I'm joined by Catherine, who's the manager of Growth and Investment, and I'm the new mayor, been in the job for six months, but a long-term resident with a lot of experience in, and lived experience in our community, seeing the growth journey that Casey's gone through. And I think the, for context, the size of Casey, I think is very significant to the growth that's occurred and that will be occurring in Victoria population-wise. So, we're the largest municipality in all of Victoria with about 426,000 residents at last count, so we have done a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of housing growth over recent decades. For context, we've grown 200,000 residents in the last 20 years, and a lot of that has been growth, both greenfield site as well as some infill with subdivisions and the like. So, we come, I guess, to this inquiry, as I mentioned prior, that we have limited direct impact from these planning provisions, but I think we look at it from the broader growth story of Casey and Victoria, and particularly in the context of the housing targets that have been put out by the government, which in principle we're supportive of with the infill and the, and the outer suburbs 70/30 principle. That's, that's led to targets, so we are still going to be doing heavy lifting. 87,000 dwellings is the target for Casey, which is, is a lot, but something that we can, we feel we can deliver. So, I think in the context of this inquiry, we've, we've been watching with great intent about how these planning provisions can facilitate potentially delivering on those housing targets, because in our community, we, we've done a lot of the heavy lifting and we provide a lot of the affordable housing for Victorians, particularly recent arrivals and migrant communities. So, we, we have a lot of people wanting to live in Casey, but as populations grow, they inevitably do come out to the outer suburbs to seek housing, and I think we have growth challenges ourselves. So, we do see it important for that spread of new housing to be both in inner suburbs as well as the outer suburbs, and, and I think these planning provisions, we're hoping that that can help facilitate that, because we are going through a housing crisis, and we feel that every day, and we also feel the homelessnessness. It's, it's in our community, it's not so much necessarily in those inner suburbs. When, when there is a housing crisis, it comes out to our community. So, we see resolving the housing supply issue as a really important challenge, not just for individual councils, but for, for the state and for the country, and it's about, it's about everyone working towards that. And, and I think our concerns are if, if the planning provisions aren't in place to facilitate that, that we'll never meet these targets and we won't actually address the supply issue. So, I think we come to this inquiry being able to offer, I guess, experience and a history of, of growth and how that's been delivered, and also how we can be part of that going forward. And I might now, Catherine might be able to speak a little bit to the history, because there is some synergies between these type of planning provisions and what's actually taken place in part of our growth story, particularly around PSPs, like new precincts that have been built, and the rules around that. So, I'm not sure, Catherine, are you able to maybe speak to that?
Thanks, Mr Mayor, and thank you, committee, for inviting us along today. We're pleased to support the inquiry in its deliberations and offer any advice and assistance where, where we can. As the mayor indicated, we've been a growth area council for a very long time, and we will continue to be one for some time to come. We've welcomed many residents into the municipality, and I know that is across both our growth areas and established areas. The growth areas in particular, from a planning regime perspective, have a few similarities with some of the amendments that, that you're contemplating through this process. We, we've been, we've adjusted and we now work within this regime where there is, state government are the planning authority for a lot of our growth areas. We are a, we have a role to participate in that, but we have no decision-making role in what happens in our growth areas. We have to implement it. There's no notice requirements at all for any of our applications in our growth areas, and that might seem more well and good at the start when there's no residents living in these areas yet, but these plans exist for 20 years. So, we've got residents that have been in growth areas for 15 years opposite a vacant paddock, and then all of a sudden, the paddock gets developed and they get no, they get no visibility on what's happening out there, and that's the way the regime and the planning mechanisms work to facilitate, as the mayor said, our substantial growth of over 5,000 dwellings a year in Casey. So, so we have applied zones, I know that's a feature of some of the zones and controls that you're, you're working through here. They work generally quite well. As Mr Gutman indicated, we also work in partnership with the development community to facilitate growth, and it's certainly a very, a very well-established sector in terms of the residential and industrial greenfield development market. So, we are able to support and welcome many thousands of residents every year to the City of Casey. That does come at a substantial cost in terms of providing infrastructure and services, and we think we do a pretty good job at, at providing the best we can for those residents moving into Casey. For example, we've secured by the end of this financial year, over the last five years, over $120, $130 million of land for sport reserves and community facilities. So, if you think about, you know, the discussions around how do we, how do we support residential growth in established areas, the community and recreation facilities and open space is, is a very costly exercise. That was all developer contribution funded. We then deliver kindergartens annually, we deliver rec reserves annually, I think we've delivered over 10 to 12 over the last five years as well. So, it's, it's, it's been a great opportunity to support residents moving in in that way that the, the committee and the established areas will contemplate as is envisaged that growth in the infill and established areas ramps up. I think I'll leave it there through the chair.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your contributions. Then we'll move into questions now, starting with yours truly. Mr Walters, if I could just pick up a question first of all, you, you mentioned about flood heights and such like, and being switched off to be able to do a decision on, on those sort of issues. A proposition was put by an earlier witness that that's not a problem, because even though the council can no longer deal with it, it'll be picked up effectively through the building code. I guess, A, is that, is that true, do you think, and B, is that actually the way to do it?
It's true that the building system should pick up on the most current flood information, but it's possible to have a situation where the planning permit will reference different, different floor levels to the building permit, and then you'll have to go through an amendment process with the planning permit, which is a little odd. We'd like to pick up these issues as early as possible in the process, so we think it's better if it's picked up in the planning process.
That's, that's a very, I suspect, a very diplomatic response, so thank you for that, I appreciate it. Question I'd like to put to all three councils, there has been discussion of the potential for a selectif revocation of 267 with regard to the Clause 55 exemptions, which obviously strikes to Clause 65 of the Decision Guidelines and section 60 of the Act, sorry, getting a bit tired. Thinking about that potential relocation, I guess it's been suggested that that could be the next zombie apocalypse. I guess I'd like to ask the question, if that was to occur, would that have an adverse effect on planning times, planning approval times within your councils? And do you think it would have an adverse effect on investment by developers in your respective councils? So, shall we start with Moonee Valley on this?
So, to walk back the existing provision?
Yes, to reinstate the council discretion and to switch on the things that have been switched off, I guess.
I think that the DED comply provisions set up a framework for faster development approval, I think that's the reality, so reinstating those elements would, in theory, slow down future development. However, the current Moonee Valley is, has been able to approve developments, 85% of the applications are approved within the statutory timeframe, so we don't think that the planning timeframe is a major impediment to new development. What was the other part of your question?
Would it discourage development and?
It's difficult to speculate on that, though. Planning, I would just say that planning's only one element with respect to what drives new development, it's a market-driven, and a capacity of the building industry is also a player, a more significant player, in my view.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kupman.
I've heard a number of my colleagues today speak to the approval timeframe not being a factor. Kingston would agree with that position. In terms of impact on development, we would say this, because our housing strategy is so current, it's actually facilitating opportunities for housing, it's a contemporary housing strategy. And we don't believe it would actually put the market in a very similar position to that which is intended by these controls anyway. And I would agree with Mr. Walters' notion, the biggest constraint at the moment to actual development occurring at the market pre-conditions, they're not the planning system. And I say that with more strength from the perspective of the contemporary nature of our housing strategy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think we don't have a strong view on the impact of two six seven. We have only a very modest amount of applications that would be subject to the new controls. I checked today, we have, in terms of the notice and the removal of the appeal provisions, we have one objector-led appeal live before Casey, and it's for a non-residential use in a residential area. So it doesn't, it wouldn't even be factored in here. I don't think we generate a lot of objectors to our planning applications. I think everyone's busy paying their mortgage and sitting in the car on the way to work and home and doing other things, saying that we haven't turned our mind to the impact of, as mentioned, some of the E S D and other local policy implications that may or may not be impacted by the retention or revocation of the amendment.
Thank you. Thinking about the suite of the three planning amendments that fall within the terms of reference of the committee, could I ask, in terms of their practical application, to what degree do they adequately address the provision of civic and social infrastructure and public open space? Again, maybe we'll start with Moonee Valley.
I think there's uncertainty around that for us, particularly around where the funding and indeed the land would come from. We're ringed by the councils, we have no way to develop new sporting fields or other park infrastructure without acquisition of land that might otherwise be developed for housing indeed. So it's quite a challenge for us with respect to the, the growth is a challenge in that context.
Thank you.
I think from Kingston's perspective, with respect to public open space, I did use that example in our submission about purchasing houses. We did that through the subdivision act and the open space contributions that were afforded in that area, which are higher than that which would be provided outside an activity centre. So we're generally happy that, from a public open space perspective, the current contributions regime does work. We are aware that the government are doing work on civic and social infrastructure that's yet to be released. We do feel that that's quite critical as a complementary tool to the nature, the kind of reforms that are before the committee today.
Thank you.
I'd support that. I think we haven't done, we haven't reviewed in detail the implications of that to our provision of infrastructure and services in our established areas beyond our existing structure planning, where we think we can adequately accommodate existing proposed growth, delivery of additional infrastructure and services, not just by council, but state, an interesting and expensive proposition. And I do also await some of the outcomes of the infrastructure contributions review and other mechanisms to help understand how that balance and provision can be met.
So much to look forward to. Mr. Davis?
I'm going to try and be quick and cover as much territory as I can. I'm going to start with Kingston. To summarise your very helpful submission, and I thank you both for it, you would prefer that Amendment C two oh three just be reinstated, and you could get on with it. You're actually going to redevelop or develop a significant housing infrastructure, and you've actually done the work with the community and indeed with the government.
To your significant question, Mr. Davis, we've certainly done the work with the community. We do feel that Amendment C two oh three is beneficial for the committee to consider from the perspective of the enhancements it provides. We do know that we're in a kind of unique position, in that it's just been approved reasonably recently.
And then the rug pulled out.
And we also see our activity centre work that we have been doing quite successfully is also being really critical to that housing mix. The purpose of presenting Amendment C two oh three today was to demonstrate, particularly from tree canopy and E S D perspectives, we think it really does add some value to how, you know, neighbourhood development occurs, particularly away from activity centres. We do say in our submission that an unintended consequence of Amendment two six seven is to perhaps lose some of those local nuances that Kingston did develop with its community.
Thank you. Moonee Valley, the Nidri proposal, it seems to me, in many respects, it's wildly unsuitable. It doesn't have the transport capacity that a dense node would desirably have. Am I unreasonable in that?
I think it's got the potential for enhancement that would support further development. As I said in my opening statement, the current state of what is the Route fifty-nine tram, which is the main public transport element, is serviced by smaller trams, non-accessible stops. It interacts and meanders through, particularly between Flemington and the start of the activity centres, it goes through local roads, so it's quite.
How long's the council been waiting for the upgrade of the tram to a modern service with bigger capacity?
I'm not sure of the timeframe, but that's with Yarra trams and.
Decades?
It's been, well, the whole programme of upgrades of Victoria's tram system is, we're caught up in that, so it's been a while.
Thank you. And now I just want to talk about Casey, because, and I'm pleased that you're here, and I do note Casey's the largest municipality in the state. You still have a number of outstanding PSPs, PSPs where, I was out in Casey relatively recently, I think one of the ones, it might be Clyde South from memory, been waiting for five, six, seven years for approval? Am I right on that?
Thanks, mate, yes. Steph, that is correct. We've been advocating for the V P A to commence the Clyde South P S P, which is our largest remaining P S P that's yet to be developed, and that will in itself.
It's got industrial land, it's got a range of uses, but it's also got significant new housing.
Absolutely, yes, very much so, and hopefully some stabling for a railway extension that we have been also waiting for some time on, yes.
So we're in a housing crisis, and we've got a government sitting on its hands on the work on a P S P for seven years.
I would suggest that's something you can ask the V P A this afternoon, but yes, we have been.
How many houses, roughly?
I would say.
Five thousand?
Oh, I think more than that.
More than that. Ten thousand?
Maybe more than that.
Maybe more than that. In a housing crisis and a state government that won't lift a finger to move on this.
We have been advocated, it's advocating on that matter. We believe it is in the work programme now for pre-planning.
After seven years, pre-planning.
I think this is a very important point. And just in terms of infrastructure, I wanted to ask you about infrastructure. You are recipient of G A C, G A C is, I should say, paid for by developers who collect it from those to whom they sell the land, but the G A C goes into the city. Has all the G A C that's been collected in the city of Casey returned to the city of Casey? The growth areas infrastructure charge.
Correct, no, no, I'm aware of the G A C. The reporting in the Department of Transport and Planning's annual report indicates that a lot of the G A C collected in Casey is spent in Casey. However, it's, there's no clear direction or criteria or visibility as to how that is necessarily allocated or what it gets spent on. We don't have a role in that.
And the windfall gains tax is going to be applied in Casey?
I would expect that's something that's applied across all councils, and may in fact have a greater implication in Kingston.
Will that impede the development of affordable housing, housing that perhaps young families may wish to buy?
The windfall gains tax is not applied, my understanding, in the growth areas. So it's more if it's a rezoning, yeah, a middle.
The holding charges, the land tax charges?
We might come back, I think we're going to have a little bit of time.
A little bit of time. Thank you, I appreciate it. That's actually very.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walters, please.
Thank you, Chair. I particularly have some questions from Moonee Valley, as you can appreciate. I'm the member for Northern Metropolitan Region, which does have certain coverage over areas of Moonee Valley Council. And I wanted to ask particularly about the North Essendon and Nidri Activity Centres. And are you able to outline to us about the consultation that the council and the community have done in the lead-up to the activity centres, and then furthermore, any changes that came about as a result of community consultation?
So the consultation on that, on the activity centres was led by the V P A, not by council?
Did council participate? Obviously, you made a submission. Was there any changes from this original to?
Yeah, some of the things we raised in our submission were addressed. Kate's probably better to.
Maybe too, whoever it would be best placed.
Yeah, the key change was to the catchment area. So we have the Housing Choice and Transport Zone Two in our catchments, which is that the height limits are three stories mostly, four stories on major sites, like over a thousand square metres. So that was a change from what we had expected from the details we got, like August last year.
Okay, so the only, so there's no changes to the boundary? I understand there was a reduction in the boundary area.
There were tweaks to the boundary, yeah.
So there were changes to the boundaries, was that a reduction or an addition?
We'd have to look at the map.
I understand it's a reduction of that area, as I understand it, but if that's not the case, I'm happy to be corrected. So there was some, what, reduced height limits, is that right?
The, from memory, there was a.
I'm just trying to understand the effectiveness of your submission and others that.
Initially, there was a core and a, then there's an inner catchment and an outer catchment. The inner catchment doesn't apply. What was published in the end was, so effectively that meant we've got the core and the select sites along the core of that activity centre, and then it reduces down to three stories predominantly in the single catchment zone that's beyond that.
So sort of a maximum of three stories.
With some four-story elements, yeah. So there was moderation from the initial proposal.
Okay. And I think perhaps it was, Mr. Davis talked about transport in the area, or it's a particular reference to the tram. Is there any other large-scale infrastructure being planned around the area that communities might be?
The main large-scale infrastructure or transport infrastructure that applies to Moonee Valley is a little further north, and it relates to the airport rail, which the council have been an advocate for.
Okay. Is there a proposal there around the train station?
The train station, yeah. It will, it's basically on the border of Brimbank and Moonee Valley, but it'll, its zone will be within Moonee Valley.
So would the proposed train station be within the activity centre or not?
No, no, it's near a future activity centre, Airport West, effectively.
It's one of the fifty that's to come?
No, beyond that.
Beyond that? Okay, just to understand where that one sits in the scheme. So we've got a reduction in boundary, a lowering of the height limits, some train line that's coming in, and.
Mr. MacArthur, please.
So there are some changes that have been made as a result of the submission, which I see you included in your submission to us here in the committee. Thank you very much.
It's also worth noting that council has recognised those as activity centres in previous work.
Yes, yes. Now, the other thing is that, just to note, over the last thirty years, the sort of extraordinary growth in Moonee Valley, and I just want to acknowledge that from council. You're not the only one that has had quite extraordinary growth over the last little while. We've heard from the councillors before about the proportion of the growth and where it's coming from with respect to supply into Melbourne. And yes, Moonee Valley is pulling a bit of a load there. Thank you so much for making more homes for more Victorians. Is there any sort of reflection from yourselves or others about equality and equity of growth in established Melbourne and also in our growth areas, given that we have such, well, historically low growth in some areas and some L G As compared to others, such as Casey, which I understand has triple-digit growth, is that right? Yeah. So perhaps I'll go to Casey and we can come back.
Yeah, so our growth has been very significant. We're on track to be larger than Tasmania, so almost a state now on right. That's the size of it, and we're almost bigger than Canberra.
Twelve centres.
Yes, yes. So we've experienced a lot of that growth, but look, I think we're very supportive of providing affordable homes, and even infill within our existing suburbs, it's occurring at the moment. We'd be, we'd be welcome, we'd welcome any further investment in activity centres in our community to grow housing around services and transport. So there's certainly opportunities for that. Catherine, a few?
I think it's, I think just curious, you know, observing the progression of these amendments and, you know, a lot of the similarities and things that we're expected to support the state government's housing targets and delivery through growth. It seemed to be jarring with more established communities, which, you know, we can't keep absorbing the state's housing growth and population increases. We need, as the mayor said, others to start doing some heavy lifting.
Thank you, Catherine, I appreciate your input.
Dr. Mansfield?
Thank you, thank you for appearing and for your submission. I'm interested with V C two six seven. We've heard evidence from M A B and some others that councils first learnt of the full extent of the exemptions in particular only on Gazettele of that planning scheme amendment. I was just wondering if that was your experience?
Yeah. So we saw previous drafts, but certainly the first time we were aware of those exemptions was on the fourth of March.
Okay. Yep, okay. And in terms of then, because obviously that planning scheme amendment was effective immediately, what was that transition period like for council in terms of, I guess, adjusting your processes and how did you, what was that like practically?
Planning was the talk of the town, that's for sure. There's a lot of frenzied activity in the back rooms of the planning department, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, for us, it's updating websites and forms and the like. I think more for Kingston, in the space of our tree objectives and our sustainability objectives, it was trying to find a place to still have those conversations with developers outside of prescribed aspect of the planning scheme. So we've turned our mind to how we best do that in the circumstances that we find ourselves in. And we have E S D officers who work actively in that space. So that's probably been the learning for us, to need to really kind of dive into how we respond to applications now, where it's not as prescribed as perhaps it may have been previously to the planning scheme amendment being introduced.
Look, I was just going to add, the implementation and adjusting processes and forms and reports and the like, you know, we're just taking it methodically as applications come in and as we need to. We'll, in due course, update everything accordingly, but, you know, I think maybe we're. I think maybe we're a bit more accustomed to the minister, you know, gazetting different things and having to accommodate requirements from the state quite frequently and regularly.
Would, MAB suggested a longer notice period for significant changes to the VPP would be useful for councils just to assist with implementation, identification of problems, opportunity to provide feedback? Is that something you would support?
Yes, we're in agreement with the MAB.
And I guess I'd be interested in just following up some of your comments, Jonathan. So you've said you've started turning your mind to how you can still, is it still achieve some of those ESD and tree canopy objectives outside of the, I guess, what's been prescribed in the new res code? What do you mean by that?
I think it's, at paragraph twenty nine of our submission, we outline some of the things that used to be within our local policy.
Yep.
The art of influence in terms of the role of the statutory planner is often very early engagement with the architects and designers. When it's prescribed in our scheme, which is what Amendment C two O three allowed us to do, we probably had a bigger stick to say, in Kingston now you must have a light coloured roof on your house because it will keep the ambient temperature within it lower than what it would otherwise be. We're not prevented from having that conversation as a consequence of the amendment. And we're also yet to see whether or not the VCAT will actively defend that proposition if challenged by the market in imposing it. So around the things that we need and our submission talks to, you know, the sixty plus year life cycle of a home, around the things that we really think need to happen, we're just trying to have the conversation now with the design professionals that engage with our planning teams. Perhaps outside the statutory construct that we had previously with our amendment, how that will play out in terms of market take up will be fascinating. Yeah.
And it's very early days, so we're already having those conversations prior to applications being lodged. We're having those conversations once they have been lodged. And I think we've only got a handful of applications that have come back with responses to what we're saying as suggested improvements to the design or the outcome. So it's really, watch this space type exercise at the moment.
You're really relying on, I guess, developers to come to the table and be willing to go above what is prescribed, isn't it?
We are turning our mind to the end consumer because planning is a paper exercise essentially. There's humans that sit behind the process after it's approved. So we are trying to modify our communications to talk about why it's important from a consumer's perspective. We're fortunate to be a middle Melbourne council that's relatively affluent. So we're hoping that, you know, consumers ask the architects and dress people to embrace some of the things in our planning scheme. Previously, we encouraged them to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crozier?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you all for being for the committee and providing the submissions and evidence to the committee. Could I perhaps just start with Mr. Walters? Thank you for your comments. And you mentioned the tram corridor, you mentioned the restrictive, well, pretty restricted in relation to what it can move now. Given the government's proposal, what additional transport infrastructure will be required?
It may be more a question you put to a transport planner. However, I think the existing tram corridor can be leveraged to create more capacity, but it would come, would necessitate decisions to be made around the primacy of vehicles versus, cars versus public transport to make effective change.
Yep. But difficult in terms of?
It's space constrained, constrained. It goes through relatively narrow, streets that don't have capacity to accommodate more cars, basically.
We've heard from community groups and representation from your community, they have been very concerned about the lack of consultation. And basically, I think it was said that activity centres, they thought they were like playgrounds or something. They didn't understand the capacity of what the government's proposals were. Given those concerns, have you had an opportunity to take those concerns back to the minister?
Council recently, not this week, but the month before, council meeting, made a resolution around some of the planning changes and wrote to the minister on those.
Have you requested, could we have a copy of that letter, that request?
It's public, yeah.
Okay. Has it been, so have you not met with the minister previously? Or have you had a request to meet with the minister previously?
I can't recall off the top of my head what meetings we've had in the way up to the gazetteled. Sorry. We can delve into that.
I'll take it on notice. That's fine. Thank you very much. Mr. Gutman, can I come to you? And thank you very much for your detailed submission. And I just want to go back to your Amendment C two O three. And when, and ask, when the government put out their affordability partnership to build eight hundred thousand Victorian homes statement in September of twenty twenty three, did you take that as part of what the work you were doing would be incorporated into that ambition?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. And on that, so literally, you know, as you said, it was gazettetted a few months later after that statement was, was done. And you speak about the work that you did with the community in your submission. Over a period of six years, council has expended significant sums of money to develop its housing strategy and subsequent planning scheme amendment, including multiple stages of extensive community consultation. Can you give an indication to the committee of how much money you have actually spent on this process?
It would be very difficult to actively quantify. It certainly went through an independent planning panel. There were legal advocates for council. There were a range of different consultants that have helped us over the years to develop the strategy. There was quite significant officer time, community time spent working it up. I don't want to leave the committee with the impression, though, that the entire strategy has been thrown out as a consequence of this amendment. Its component parts of the amendment that concern the city of Kingston around eroding some of the local nuance. To accurately quantify it, Ms. Crozier, would be quite difficult at this notice.
That's all right. I understand that. Given it was over six years, it would be quite a significant amount of money, given the planning requirements that you went through.
Yeah, and effort from our officers and our successive councils.
Thank you. You also said that, that in paragraph eleven, you know, that detail of what you did do with the community around the consultation, which I think is in stark contrast to the current process by government around these activity centres. If you look at what you've said, direct mail to over seventy eight thousand owners and occupiers, tailored letters advising of existing and proposed controls and the summary brochure. So very extensive work that you've undertaken. And then you put in further information through brochures that were included in the rates notices, and the online consultations were offered, over five hundred submissions were received. Can you just talk through the committee what you did with those submissions? What happened in that process?
Yeah, we'd be happy to. There were probably two stages. One to the strategy, like developing the strategy and then the amendment. This comment, paragraph eleven, very much focuses on the amendment stage. Our process is once we receive submissions, they're digested by our professional team, which has worked on this work together for, you know, the amount of time we spoke about in our submission. We're then required, and a job we like doing is providing advice to our council on the nature of the individual submissions and whether or not there should be changes to the intent of the planning scheme amendment.
If I can say, out of those five, I mean, it's a, it's a very extensive consultative process that you went through with your local community, and you fed that back to council? And then council were, you know, informed about community concerns? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, it wasn't just concerns, I should say, but all feedback. And we got feedback from the market as well, that we perhaps weren't providing enough housing, and we got feedback from others that we were providing too much. But yes, that's a process that we follow.
Quite different from the current process by government.
I think quite a different challenge, to be fair. When we're dealing with our local community, it is different than dealing with the entire state of Victoria. We probably, we probably couldn't expect any government...
Well, I would expect them to do better than they've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Crozier.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to, well, thank you all for coming, for starters, but ask a question that I asked to the previous group of councils. And that was around the Plan Melbourne and Plan Victoria targets of the seventy thirty model. And given that, you know, from slightly different areas of, you know, of Melbourne, be interested on the feedback as to how you view that, how you view those, those numbers of the seventy thirty we were looking at.
Yeah, I mentioned it in my initial opening that we're very supportive in principle of the seventy thirty split. We think that there, as an outer council who's done a lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of greenfield sites, a lot of growth right up to the urban boundary, that the next phase needs to be combined effort of inner, of inner councils as well as ourselves. And as I mentioned, you know, our target of eighty seven thousand dwellings is, is not something to shy away from. We're happy to do that. But I think our concerns is if the housing in the inner is not delivered, for whatever reason that may be, that we will just never reach the targets and we'll be back as councils, state governments and federal governments, talking about a housing crisis for years and years to come. So it's about looking at it at a bigger picture and obviously mindful of our, of our own residents, but making sure that we're all doing what we can to put people in homes. And I think, as I mentioned in my opening, that the consequences of not doing that are felt overwhelmingly and disproportionately in our outer suburban communities where, where people are looking for affordable housing. And if there is no housing, the homelessness is on our doorstep. On a day to day basis, I get residents complaining and concerned about tent cities and people living in parks. And that's a consequence of not having enough homes in whatever form. And we certainly want to continue to do the heavy lifting, but there has to be a shared approach to this. And we have to, we have to look to the bigger picture. So I think that's where we want to play our role.
From Kingston's perspective, and we did draw out in our submission the role of activity centre structure planning. And we, we took the committee to Cheltenham and the example of Cheltenham delivering housing well ahead of other parts of Melbourne because that structure planning was done. We're at strong support of seventy thirty, and we would say that transport infrastructure is particularly critical with, I think, with the municipality with the most level crossing removals. They're particularly catalytic in terms of connecting up our city. And there is obviously another significant transport project that starts in our city that's also quite critical in terms of that balance. The final point I'll make is we're also a major industrial city. We have Morabben, Brayside and Clayton South. Seventy thirty is more and more important in terms of providing a balanced workforce to support the manufacturing sector that we have in the state of Victoria. And we are noticing the increased commutes from other LGAs into our city to support our industrial sector. So housing and affordable housing is particularly critical in maintaining the required balance to ensure that key workers are accessible to a number of the local small to medium scale businesses that exist in our industrial areas as well.
Thank you.
We don't have an endorsed position on the specifics of seventy thirty. However, we overall support the objective of delivering essential housing and the logic around public transport nodes is sound from a planning point of view. And I know the Planning Institute have also made a submission along those lines. We just underscore that the supporting infrastructure can't be taken for granted and it needs to respond to that intensification.
I think the other point, I just wanted to follow up, and it might be more for yourselves with Casey, is just the flip side. When you start looking at, you know, we've talked about services and infrastructure, but also the pressures on agricultural land. Obviously, we've got, you know, some pretty significant horticultural land around yourselves. Like, what are the realities or the consequences of if, if you do have to keep expanding on what that means for, for pretty prime agricultural, horticultural land around yourselves?
I think maybe Catherine can talk to agriculture, but in terms of that expansion side of it, what we're finding is that more and, the more and more you move out, you talk to residents living in Clyde and those further out areas, that they're further and further away from the city. So, but yeah, and they're further away from public transport. So the more you move out, the further you are from a train station. We've had two hundred thousand residents and no new train station, which comes back to that Clyde rail extension that there's been a lot of advocacy for from, to all levels of government to, to support that at some point. But the further you move out, the further you are from, from that. So I think there's got to be acknowledgement that there are challenges with infill, with infrastructure, but it's already there and it can be maximised and potentially improved and worked within the community. But when we're building in a new area, you have no aquatic facility, you have no library. And we're, as a council, kind of left with that and not necessarily a pathway to fund that. So building in, you know, if we have to accommodate growth, and I think we all agree we need to, we need supply, I think that's where that seventy thirty, and that's where it has to be done in and around built up, built areas, because the cost to us and our community of continually going out is more significant. I don't know, Catherine, whether you can add to?
Yeah, thanks. I think it's an interesting question. It's a conundrum in terms of how do we manage agricultural land being absorbed for housing if we continue outward residential growth? I recall the city of Casey back in twenty eleven advocated, in fact, to not extend the urban growth boundary as much as it has been to protect the Bunyip food belt. However, that wasn't supported. And in fact, the farmers also did not object to losing their farmland for housing. So they've moved on into purchasing bigger farms further out. So it is a real conundrum that the, as a state, we have to balance, you know, housing and other non-residential land uses such as farming and food security and supply.
I think just to yourself, Peninsula's got two billion dollars of ag output, you know, but anyway, sorry. Chair, thank you.
You're right. Mr. MacIntosh, thank you so much. Mrs. McHale?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you everyone for coming. Now, I just want to get this on the record. The last group of councillors and your group of councils have all confirmed that should a revocation order go through, that would not have an impact on any future development investment in your areas. That's basically what you've all agreed. I'll take it as a yes. Excellent. Oh, the hand side.
We might actually just get a quick verbal response might be useful.
Well, it's hard to speculate, to be honest. But we think returning to the previous regime would not introduce significant delay.
Thank you.
Our submission addresses that question.
Yeah, we would agree. Yeah, thank you. So that's a unanimous yes from all councillors, councils that have presented. Now, the public and I could be forgiven for thinking that all this problem of increased housing is a result of recalcitrant councils who don't quickly give approvals for development. Yet what you've told us is that actually it's the state government holding up planning amendments to develop more housing. I mean, I think we didn't get to a figure, but over ten thousand houses are languishing somewhere in the ether because of the sitting on the minister's desk. So, but you've all demonstrated, and previous councils have, that you approve development plans within the designated time period of sixty days, I think. And it's not your problem that developers don't want to go ahead with putting that product to market because often it's so expensive to produce, there isn't a market. So, you know, we're, we're in a situation where it's not your fault that houses may not be built. Sometimes it's the government's fault for sitting on amendments. So we confirm that that's the situation. You're not holding up the show. You're not holding up the show.
The only thing I would say in response to that is I wouldn't apportion blame to any entity, and there's always opportunities for improving efficiency of the planning system, and I'd love it that.
We would say that the amendment we wanted to be approved had been, and we have no amendments currently before the minister waiting for approval that relate to housing.
But you've approved developments as they've come before you.
Yes, and we continue.
You have held the system up.
And the other amendment's been wheeled back.
Yeah, and you've approved them, obviously with the number of houses you've approved. Could also be the case, couldn't it, that people actually make a choice? They might want to go and live in Casey, or they might want to go and live in Kingston. They might not necessarily want to go and live in Burundara or Stonington. So isn't that, that's part of the whole market operation, the choice of individual consumers? They can go wherever they like, can't they?
I think choices, yeah, there's obviously an element of choice, but choice is influenced by factors. So someone on average wage in, living in, renting in Doveton's not going to go and buy a house or rent in Torack. So I think your choices are defined by your circumstances, so I think it's a bit more complex.
Yeah, there's plenty of flats available all over the place, it seems. Now, Mr. Gutman, you've provided extraordinary, interesting requirements, you know, in paragraph 21 and paragraph 29. Were all those eminently important amendments to C2O3, you know, they won't be included in this sort of cookie cutter approach of development if the planning amendments were to go ahead, would they? They'd be lost, you know, light coloured roofing materials, passive surveillance, tree canopy, et cetera, water efficient stuff.
They would be harder to achieve, Ms. MacArthur. Whether they're lost or not would be a matter for the effective engagement that our planners have with people who are putting planning propositions.
So we'd effectively have a downgrading of the quality and livability of housing in at least the Kingston City Council if these planning amendments went ahead, because all these proposals aren't going to be able to be incorporated in the new cookie cutter approach.
Yeah, I made the comment in my submission that it's a particularly difficult task to be the leader in a space in this area. I will say that the environmental standards, the best standards are applied across a number of councils, so they are important principles that have been developed by our sector broadly to influence the sustainability of housing, which we say in our submission is particularly important at the moment.
Have any of your councils done the work on what will be the extra cost to ratepayers of infrastructure if these planning amendments were to go ahead, that you'll have to provide, whether it's open space, parking, you know, new pipeworks for sewage or water or whatever? All of that work, have you done a costing on what that, what it might look like for your councils?
I can start that, as most of those amendments don't directly apply, we haven't needed to do that work.
I made a comment earlier to the committee that we were aware that the government are looking at civic and social infrastructure, that was a specific question we got. We have used the public open space contributions through the subdivision act. We are increasingly thinking that that's an area where there might need to be higher levels of contribution to provide more open space.
From whom?
From the people who benefit from the development rights that are provided over the land that they're.
So an extra developer contribution?
Take this question, will you?
Well, we have got a higher rate around our activity centres than we do in our suburban areas, and we do that from the perspective that the yield in those activity centres is much higher than suburban areas, Ms. MacArthur.
Mr. Walters, did you want to?
Only that we have not done our own internal costing on the additional infrastructure, but we have asked for VPA's tech reports that support that analysis.
Thank you, Mrs. MacArthur. We've got about 10 minutes left, so we might just do a bit of speed dating at the end, a few quick questions. The Auditor General, sorry, we're going on into a brave new world, an exciting journey into change, depending on who's, experiment was another term that was used. And I guess it's often considered useful that when you're doing that, you might actually put in place some sort of a performance monitoring, continuous improvement, evaluative type process. And conveniently, and possibly embarrassingly, the Auditor General in, so it was 2008 or 2009, and also in 2017, recommended just such a proposal. Could I just work my way up the table, please, into your council's position on adopting the recommendation from the Auditor General or similar?
So you're asking about monitoring and appraisal of these changes?
Correct.
I think that would be very useful to inform incremental improvement of them over time.
Thank you.
I think if it's about output of housing, that's already captured by the PPA's process that the Department of Transport and Planning run. I think on the environmental front, however, there could be a lot more information gathered around the environmental performance of housing, and whether or not these initiatives have effectively addressed that in a neighbourhood context. I'm not sure, I must say, Mr. Chair, whether the Auditor General went to that area, but I think in terms of number of housing across HGLGAs, as the process established to capture that already.
Okay, thank you.
Look, I think it'll be, it would be useful, I think it'll be interesting to try and understand, you know, the implications and the benefits of these specific changes versus prior controls, when, you know, what we're talking about is really challenged, in a challenging environment, in terms of what we're seeing in the market and the demand and ability, the viability of a lot of these developments in the first instance. I think that would be something, you know, to also monitor houses on the ground, rather than planning, you know, documents.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, one quick question.
I've got a quick question about heritage, and particularly, others may want to comment, but particularly to Kingston. You have a couple of very unique and sensitive zones, and I'm thinking in bits of height around Pennydale, for example, and even Mentone and bits of Morete Elick. You've got some quite unique little zones with heritage focus on them. As I see it, and when I read your submission, they would be at risk under some of these changes, particularly 267, but more generally 2.
Yeah, through the pilot programme with Morabben, we didn't experience that issue apart from our town centre. Mentone certainly does have some heritage within it. We do hope that there's a nuanced approach to some of that heritage within the Mentone Activity Centre as part of the work.
Pennydale?
I need to not take the credit for Mr. Krip, who you heard from before, Mr. Davis. Pennydale's actually just over our municipal boundary.
Oh, okay, it's in Bayside, I understand.
It often does get badged in either of our LGAs.
So, but your point is that they would be at risk, as it stands?
I don't know whether the amendments per se will materially affect Kingston to the same extent they would other councils that have more heritage. The particular area of interest for us is the Mentone Activity Centre as we do that work.
Would Mr. Walt, oh, sorry, would Moonee Valley or Casey, could you pick up? Okay, Dr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Chair. I guess a reflection from what we've heard through these hearings has been that there's broad agreement that we need more density in the inner suburbs, and a lot of the councils have actually already done a lot of the work to accommodate for that increased growth. So there's actually a lot of alignment between the state government's, you know, objectives, council's objectives, but there seems to have been a bit of a breakdown in terms of genuine collaboration on how that's achieved, that's at least some of the evidence that we've heard. Going forward, are there any suggestions you can offer to improve that collaboration between the two levels of government?
In Moonee Valley's case, we're working on our housing strategy right now, so it's a different situation to Mr. Gutman and Kingston in that they've got a fresh strategy that may run into differences. So we'll be designing our housing strategy to accommodate the changes that are in place now.
We may comment in our submission about the significant amount of time we spent with the Department of Transport and Planning to get our amendment through. We found that to be a very collaborative process, it did take time, but it did also put us in a position whereby a high degree, a strong relationship was formed with the department to be able to do the nature of the planning work that was important to our local community.
I think, as Catherine's mentioned, this probably doesn't, these provisions don't directly impact Casey, but I think we can probably talk from our experience that getting houses built and getting them done in our new areas, it's been a similar process, I think you would, Catherine's referred to, whereby these get put in place and the houses get built, and that's ultimately the outcome that we want and we're seeking going forward, because houses are important.
Thank you.
Mr. Walters?
Thank you so much. I'll come back with a sort of industry reflection. We've had industry experts speaking here, planners, peak bodies, and also folks from the developer and construction industry. Their remarks to us is that any revocation as is being proposed will lead to uncertainty in the business community, lead to uncertainty in developer developments going forward and investment decisions being made. And yet, with the earlier question about if you think that that may have an impact in your local area, is a, I'm sort of sensing a bit of a disconnect between what industry is saying and what you said in an earlier question about potential delays in housing delivery. Is there a case to be made that there would be further delays in housing supply if we have greater industry uncertainty and developer uncertainty? And would that happen to impact housing supply in your area?
Given that development itself is led by industry, I think it's hard for councils to speculate on the impact, but if they're telling you that uncertainty would cause them to defer investment, I think they're in a better position to say that.
And would that, if they were to defer investment, would that ultimately lead to less housing in the LGAs that you represent? Do you have developers building in your LGAs?
We do, yes.
Right, and their increased uncertainty, would that therefore have an impact in housing supply in your community?
I think that certainly does. I mean, when we speak with, and I'm out turning sods on all our new residential developments, the developers and the builders talk about the need for certainty, that's definitely one. There are a number of other factors within the market, the construction sector and all of that, but certainty from government and council is very important. And Catherine mentioned the parallels between what we go through with our PSPs and what maybe some of these provisions are, and it would certainly, it certainly relate exactly the same. So in terms of if there's less impediment to building, they.
Less taxes.
All sorts of impediments, any impediment can reduce the housing supply, so I think having that certainty is important.
So there's less of a houses and taxes.
Ms. Crozier?
Thank you, Chair, just very, very quickly. We've heard from the city of Casey around their ability to cater for their communities and provide infrastructure like football fields and schools and a whole range of community services that are required when you are building new homes. Can I ask you, Mr. Walters, have you got that capacity to build and find new open space that would cater for this activity centre and the numbers of people that will be proposed by the government?
It's a, we currently have demand exceeding supply for our supporting infrastructure, for example.
Already.
We have capacity constrained libraries.
So this will only add to that demand?
It's very challenging.
What are they going to do, how are they going to operate? They can't.
That's why the review of the infrastructure contributions is critical, to be able to acquire land for that purpose.
And Mr. Gutman, you're nodding your head, so is that the same issue in Kingston?
Yeah, other than to say that we have a plan for how to try and address that in terms of providing for playing fields within our green wedge, we certainly have some ideas that we've presented to government about how to do that. So we're really mindful that being 20 kilometres from the CBD, it's very difficult for a number of inner councils to provide more playing areas.
Was a playing area, and now stabling it.
We would really be very keen to use the infrastructure contribution process to address some of the shortfalls that we're also seeing, like Mr. Walters.
But Mr. Walters, you're probably more constrained than Mr. Gutman, would you say, just because of the built up area that you're already in?
More dense.
More dense already?
I think any of the councils that have other local government areas around them have suffered from similar constraints. I'm not sure what the relative densities are, people per square kilometre between our municipalities.
Okay, thank you very much indeed.
All right, thanks. Look, we might wrap it up there. Could I firstly, again, thank you very much for your time and your very thoughtful contributions, it is much appreciated. You will be, as I said before, provided with a copy of transcript, and as you might guess, we're working on a very, very tight timeframe, so I would ask you to turn that around as quickly as you could, please. And having said that, the committee will now take a break for 10 minutes, and we'll be back with the Department of Planning and the VPA, which will be an exciting end to the day.